Okay, we'd like to call to order the Paramount Planning Commission meeting for July 13. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of missing commissioners here tonight, John.
Yes, we can go ahead and do roll call.
Okay, roll call please then.
Commissioner Obrego.
Here.
Commissioner Bautista.
Here.
Commissioner Sparza. Vice Chair Gutierrez. Chair Weisenberger.
Here.
And then if we could get a motion to excuse Commissioner Sparza.
Yeah, Sparza and Gutierrez.
Does Commissioner Bautista move to motion to excuse Commissioner Sparza?
Commissioner Obrego, second that.
Rule call.
Commissioner Obrego.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, let's move to Agenda Item Number One, Approval of Minutes.
Commissioner Obrego, I move that we approve the minutes for June the 9th, 2021.
Does Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that motion.
Okay, rule call please.
Commissioner Obrego.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, item number two, Unclassified Use Permit Number 21-02. Request by Altair Paramount LCC for the use of a parking lot until April 30th, 2025, for vehicle parking for demolition and construction workers at 7775 Somerset Boulevard in the Clearwater East specific plan area during the demolition and construction of the Altair Paramount Renewable Fuels Conversion Project at the World Energy Refinery.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Cavanagh. Mr. Chair, is it possible that you could take these out of order and take number two first, just in case one of the other commissioners shows up?
Sure.
So if we can indulge, ask you to do number three first?
Okay, good. All right, let's move to Agenda Item Number Three, Conditional Use Permit Number 907. This is a request by Compton Rubber Deflash to install and operate a 1,500-gallon above-ground liquid nitrogen storage tank for cryogenic deflashing of pre-manufactured plastic and rubber materials at 15545 Minnesota Avenue in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a request from a business that's going to be relocating from their current location on North Garfield Boulevard, Garfield Avenue, and they're moving here to Minnesota, and our planning intern, Christian Santana, will go over the item with you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting Conditional Use Permit Number 907 for Compton Rubber Deflash. The request is to install and operate a 1,500-gallon above-ground liquid nitrogen storage tank for a rubber deflashing business. The location is at 15545 Minnesota Avenue in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. The site itself is 11,564 square feet, and the leased suite is 2,303 square feet. So Compton Rubber Deflash is currently relocating from 14361 Garfield Avenue to 15545 Minnesota Avenue. The 1,500-gallon nitrogen storage tank was previously approved by the Planning Commission with CUP Number 814 on May 10th of 2016, and that was for the 14361 Garfield Avenue address. The company will have up to five employees, one delivery of nitrogen every two weeks during early morning hours, and business hours are from Mondays through Fridays from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Here's an aerial map of the new sites. As you can see, the site is directly adjacent to a rear alley, and the lot is outlined in red and the suite is outlined in blue. So chronic deflashing is a process that is used to remove unwanted residue from a molded or casted rubber. The deflashing machines will use liquid nitrogen to help plastic or rubber parts reach a low enough temperature that cause the residue or the flash to break away cleanly. And here are some examples of the end product after the parts have entered the deflashing machine. Here is a site plan. Minnesota Avenue is on the right, and the property is outlined in red, as well as the building is outlined in red and the suite is outlined in blue. And the orange circle is where the 1,500-gallon nitrogen storage tank will be located. Here's an exterior view of the sites. And here's the 1,500-gallon nitrogen storage tank at its present location at 14361 Garfield Avenue. The tank itself is five and a half feet in width and 12 feet and 4 inches in An environmental analysis was prepared by Blodja Bialis's Environmental Planning. The project itself is exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act, Class III and Class I exemptions. The report itself came back with the conclusion of having no significant environmental effect from the liquid nitrogen storage tank. And furthermore, the analysis from the low enough temperature to have liquid nitrogen, it must be handled with care. Building and safety requirements and inspections will ensure safety. The outdoor location is required for safety purposes. Several conditions of approval were included to prevent outdoor storage and work, and delivery vehicles will unload any material or liquid nitrogen within the rear of the property outside of the public view. So in conclusion, this is an appropriate business use for the M2 zone. With that, staff recommends adopting Resolution Number PC 210012, 012, with Conditional Use Permit Number 907. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, open the public hearings, John. Do we have any comments tonight from the public hearing?
We have no written comments. If there's anybody in the audience.
Okay, nobody from the audience wants to make comments on this issue? Okay, let's have a motion to close public hearings then, please, gentlemen.
Commissioner Obrego, I make a motion.
Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that motion.
Sorry, I didn't finish.
Commissioner Obrego.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, then I guess we'll entertain a motion to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number 21012.
Commissioner Obrego, I make a motion. We adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 21012.
And this is Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Obrego.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Mr. Cavanagh, should we go to item four and leave item two for a little bit longer?
You can, we can do this now, Mr. Chair, but let me kind of give you a little process that you can entertain, should you want to do that. My understanding is that Commissioner Obrego, you have a conflict of interest on this.
Yeah.
Therefore, Commissioner Obrego would be legally not entitled to vote on the item. However, as a result, if there's only three of you, his conflict, his abstention, would not leave a quorum on this Planning Commission. Therefore, usually, you wouldn't be able to vote on this item until you had three on the board. In these situations, there is a provision under the government code, and it's known as the rule of necessity, where if you have a situation where you have a requisite number of officials or commission members, and one has a conflict and there's a lack of a quorum, the rule of necessity allows the third member who cannot vote to be counted toward a quorum, and so that the two of you can vote on the matter. Just that Commissioner Obrego wouldn't be able to vote, but he would be counted toward a member of the quorum. So with that said, you will be able to make a decision on number two if you choose to do so. It's still up to you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Bautista, if you want to do that or you want to wait. But the law does allow this under the rule of necessity to move forward, and Commissioner Obrego would be able to abstain, and then the both of you can consider the item and take action on it.
Luis, what do you think?
Mr. Cavanagh, are we able to see the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Before we decide?
Yes, sir.
That way we kind of have a better idea of the area, because as I'm reading it, it doesn't, I mean, it's basically a parking area that needs to use.
Right.
It's not as important or, you know, something that can affect the public.
Yes, sir, yes, you can.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, and Commissioner Obrego would step down, and you would be able to at least hear the staff report.
Okay. I just want to ensure the public, if they have a comment, that they're able to say something prior to making a decision.
Yeah, sure, that's, that's.
Right, and should you decide after hearing anything that you don't want to take action, you can continue the matter.
Until next month?
Yes, if you don't want to take action, yes.
Sounds good.
Okay, why don't we?
I think it's reasonable to proceed, yeah.
Okay, so during the presentation, I'm recusing myself? Okay, excuse me.
You have to leave?
Well, during the presentation, yes.
Oh, you have to leave, okay, okay, thank you.
You have to leave anyway.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, I've already read the item here for number two, so I guess we can hear the report.
Right, okay, so yes, this is in association with the World Energy Conversion Project, and this would be for a parking area for up to three years at the south end of the SWAT meet, accessible off of Somerset Boulevard. And our associate planner, Ivan Reyes, will go over the item with you.
Thank you, John. Honorable Chair, members of the Commission, here to present Unclassified Use Permit Number 2102 for Altair Paramount. The request is the use of a parking lot until April 30th of 2025 for vehicle parking for demolition and construction workers. The property address is 7775 Somerset Boulevard. It is located in the Clearwater East specific plan. Approximately 240 construction workers will be parking here, and depending on the construction demand, that number could change. Access to the property lot will occur from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and occasionally on Saturdays, if they need to access that, that will also be, depending on the construction timeline. 13 temporary structures will be located here on this site, and I will go over them in detail in the next coming slides. Just to give you some background on here, last month, the Planning Commission approved Unclassified Use Permit Number 2101, a request to allow the use of temporary structures at the World Energy Refinery located at 14700 Downey Avenue. And also upcoming is the Planning Commission will review the refinery conversion project, which is an amendment to CUP Number 757, and that's to convert the remainder of the refinery into a renewable fuels production. So moving forward to the satellite view of the area, here, we can see the yellow outline indicates the parking lot boundaries of where this parking lot will occur. The red box at the bottom, which is off of Somerset Boulevard, that's the location of the temporary structures. And again, I will go over them in detail on the next coming slides. Area A, that is dedicated area for parking lot use, which, as it is, it's already a parking lot, but that would be for the refinery workers. So the 240 parking cars will be used in this area. Now, in case there's an, as I mentioned, if construction demand kicks up, that's where Area B will come into play. Area B is sort of like an overflow of parking lot that can accommodate approximately 410 parking spaces. So in total, Area A and Area B can accommodate 650 cars here. But again, that really depends on the timeline of construction with the And there's two access points to this parking lot. Number one shows on the green dot there. That's a 50-foot, two-way driveway, so, you know, two cars can come in and out at that time. Number two, that shows roughly a 25-foot width driveway, but again, they both lead into the parking lot, so it's good for management of cars coming in and out. The yellow indicates the shuttles, indicates, there will be shuttles that will be used to take the workers to the refinery. So that's the location of the shuttles where they would pick up and drop off, and the white arrows indicate the shuttle circulation of traffic. So you have the number one coming in as in the main entrance, and number two, again, with the white arrow showing the circulation of shuttles, and as well as the cars coming in and out of this parking Now, here's a close-up of the temporary structures. Again, it's off of the main entrance, entrance number one, to this parking lot. It's roughly 120 feet by 30 feet. So there will be two containers, as you can see, number one and number two, and those are containers. And then the cluster of temporary structures, I will go over in the next slides, and that's number three through 13. So with the temporary structures, they're proposing 40-foot portable storage containers, so those are two. Essentially, one of them will be used for a security office, and the second will be used for a temperature check station. And they're roughly 320 square foot, which is about average size. Moving on, starting off with the left-hand side, this is a turnstile, and they will have two of them. And then in the middle, it's the portable restroom. They're proposing to have four. And on the right-hand side is the wash station, and they're proposing to have two. This is a solar light tower. It's an example of what they're proposing to have here, and they're, they want to have three in this area. And lastly, with all those temporary structures, they will be screened by this perimeter fencing, which, this is an example of what they're proposing, to screen all those temporary So here's two pictures of the property. On the top left, it's a view looking north on the parking lot. That's the area where the vehicles will be used for parking. And as you can see, the adjacent property is Honeybee International. I just want to make a note of it. There is some graffiti there on the side of the property, but we have reached out to the property owner to just clean up that graffiti. And the picture on the bottom left, bottom right, sorry, looking south, this is the location of the temporary structures. So with the existing wall there, along with the perimeter fencing, it will be, the temporary structures will be screened from public view and away from the street. So with that, staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number PC 21013, and for Unclassified Use Permit Number 2102. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just Commissioner Bautista, I have a couple of questions. Are we able to, because 650 cars, if they do come in and out of that area, it's going to be a burden for the community? So are we able to minimize the number of cars that are allowed, or is it something that has already been worked out?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, it's really just dependent, those are preliminary numbers that they're giving us. So as far as the construction timeframe, we don't necessarily know exactly how that schedule will come about, but it's something that we can, you know, work with the applicant on, I guess mitigating the traffic.
How many shuttles are we looking at?
That is still dependent, that's still dependent on the Conditional Use Permit. So Condition, on the Resolution Number 20, the Conditional of Approval, it's dependent on that. So right now, it's just a rough estimate, but we'll get more details as that time.
And my last question is, so Altair is actually leasing this property for the time being? Or do they own it?
No, I think there would be subleasing.
They would be leasing.
Subleasing for the project?
Right.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
And Commissioner Bautista, I refer to the upcoming World Energy Conversion Conditional Use Permit that you will hear in the fall. That will have probably more detail on the shuttle schedule, number of cars that will be parking here. So that you'll be reviewing in several months.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think we could probably go ahead and form a quorum with Commissioner Obrego. What do you think?
Sounds good.
Okay, John, okay, John, can we go that path there?
Will, consider the rule of necessity?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so that means Commissioner Obrego then is going to be counted but not voted.
He cannot vote.
Okay.
He's only here for purposes of having a quorum.
So now with Commissioner Obrego, we have a quorum on this issue.
We should know about the public.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Let's open up the public hearing portion tonight. Any comments from the public, any written?
We have no written comments. The applicant is in the audience and may wish to speak.
Okay.
Nope, okay.
No?
Not unless you have questions.
All right, very good.
Then, no questions? Okay, this is Commissioner Bautista, and I'm going to make a motion to move and proceed with adopting Resolution PC 21013, Unclassified Use Permit.
That's right, yeah, we need to, let's close the public hearing first.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I will second the motion. All right, and now I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution, 210.
We have to do roll call first. So Commissioner Obrego.
Abstain.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, so now we'll have the motion then to adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC 21013.
Okay, and then I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Obrego.
Abstain.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes.
The vote passes 201.
201, okay, good, thank you. All right, let's move to Agenda Item Number Four then, oral reports and the City Council actions.
Yes, Chairman Weisenberger, excuse me, and Commissioners, at the City Council meeting last week, we had two unique covenants. These are from the owner, Chuckie Lyons, of two large industrial projects, one on Garfield Avenue and one on Somerset Boulevard. These are large industrial projects. They are divided up into suites that range from 8,000 to 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. Mr. Lyons had requested some way to do like an overall CUP for both of the properties that would allow warehousing to go in there with only a review by staff at an administrative level and not necessarily needing to come before the Planning Commission. So we took those, John Cavanagh worked very diligently and put together these unique covenants that do allow for what we're calling a master Conditional Use Permit. It does allow for people to apply for a warehouse use in these two projects. We would review that at a staff level, and if we deem that there are, if there are nuisance factors that can't be, that need to be viewed by the Planning Commission, then we would bring it to the Planning Commission. Some of those issues might be like large amounts of truck traffic, but again, most of these warehouses are small, 8,000, 10,000, 12,000 square feet. So the City Council did approve both of those covenants, and so that concludes my report.
Let's move to item number five, comments. Anything from our city attorney tonight?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioners?
No comments.
Comments? Staff?
No comments.
Okay, in that case, we will move to adjourn to our next meeting on August 10th, 6:00
I'd like to open up our Paramount Development Review Meeting, or Board Meeting. It's 6:29. Can I get a roll call of members?
Board Member Bautista.
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Chair Obrego.
Here. Can take a look at the minutes and get an approval for June 9th, 2021?
I move to approve the minutes from June 9th meeting.
Commissioner Bautista, second that motion.
We have a first and a second.
Board Member Bautista.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Chair Obrego.
Yes. Any public comments?
No public comments.
No new business? Comments from board members? Any comments from staff?
No comments.
Wow, this is a quick one. Okay, I'd like to adjourn our meeting. The next Public Development Review Board meeting will be on August 10th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, guys, we're moving on to the Paramount Economic Development Board for July 13, 2021. And can we have a roll call of members, please?
Board Member Obrego.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Chair Bautista.
Here. And can we move to the approval of minutes?
As Board Member Obrego, I move we approve the minutes for June the 9th.
I'll second. Weisenberger.
Can we have a roll call?
Board Member Obrego.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Chair Bautista.
Yes. Moving on to our public comments, are there any public comments for the Paramount Economic Development Board?
No public comments.
Any new business? And any reports?
Yes, item two, the Alfresco Dining Program, and I'll turn that over to John King to go through that.
Okay.
John, thank you, Board Chair. And yeah, this is just an oral report, it's just a single slide here, and an update on what's going on, you know, through COVID. We did our best as a city to support our local businesses. You know, that's what we do. In general, we have a, we've had a shop local program of different types for years, but it was really critical during this year, this unprecedented year, to really get behind our local economy and help where we could, and we did. So we, very quickly, early summer, we came up with this program to quickly approve permit, temporary permits for restaurants, and we call it the Alfresco Program. And it kind of expanded, it kind of morphed. We went along with some other businesses, came to us and approached us, barber shops, beauty salons, couple martial arts business on Paramount Boulevard, and a couple fitness businesses. So this allowed them to use part of their parking lots. As you've seen, a lot of you, most of us, at some point or another, dined outside under a tent, and we think it was a good program. At this time, now that COVID is thankfully going away, we are winding down that program or maybe restructuring it a little bit. So immediately, what we're doing, there is one business that was using part of the right-of-way, that was Casa Gomino, they had some, or as of today, they still have some tables in the public sidewalk, and the owner is actually ready to remove that area. So before long, there's a nice concrete barrier that we had an artist kind of touch it up, did some artistic flourishes. That barrier will be going away very soon. And, but they, for a little bit longer, they will be having some outdoor dining within their private property, within the back property, as with these other businesses. So the good news is, out of these businesses, only So the good news is, out of these businesses, only, well, there was one that did not survive as a business, and that was La Diosa de los Moles on 8335 Rosecrans Avenue. The business owner does have some other businesses in other cities, so luckily, she's still in operation and has a livelihood, and her employees were able to transfer over there. But that was one business that did not make it. But the others, I'll just kind of go through this list, and so they are operating, but you could kind of see them end the service over time. One voluntarily ended Asian Star Buffet, and we heard a couple others will be doing that as well. So just quickly, Alonzo Hot Wings, Ahí Verde, Casa Adelita, Casa Gamino, El Compa, IHOP, Mariscos, a lot of Mariscos restaurants, El Periote, number two, El Viejo, Los Dorados, Mi Lindo Sinaloa, Pica Tortas Ahogadas, Stinking Crawfish, Tacos Donchente, Tacos El Fogón Grill, and Tacos y Mariscos Mi Lindo Chui. So good number of restaurants, and let's continue supporting them. You know, my lunch, I try to as much as I can to get out there and help them out, and I'm sure you are too. And that's it. That concludes my presentation.
This, Commissioner Bautista, I have a question. When you say like winding down, meaning the program's going to eventually go away? Or are we going to be able to maybe, as a city, continue to help these businesses and maybe have like a spring/summer Alfresco Program that maybe we can continue through? At least maybe do like a pilot program, maybe a couple of years? I think if COVID taught us something, is, you know, we have great weather in this state, and why not take advantage of that? Hire more young people, more, you know, more jobs out there, especially in the summertime?
That's a wonderful idea. We have kicked around a few ideas, and it really, it is a bouncing act, as you know, biggest issue, one of the biggest issues in town is parking, and we've already come up with some situations where now that the indoor dining is going on, and these businesses, some of them continue to have a number of tents in their parking lots. And luckily, thankfully, they're growing their businesses again. The neighbors have brought up some concerns about parking. You know, there was, they were patient, or maybe it wasn't really an issue during these slower months, but that issue is coming back. So we would have to carefully look at them really on a case-by-case basis, or maybe do a pilot program at certain areas in town. But yeah, well, as we develop those ideas, and actually, what you're saying, we will incorporate those comments, we'll keep you on the loop in the coming months.
Thank you. That's all my question.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to comments from our board members or staff? Any comments? Okay.
No.
Since there are no public comments, then we are going to adjourn this meeting to August 10, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.